वक्रतुंडमहाकाय सूर्यकोटीसमप्रभ निर्विज्ञम कुरुमेदेव सर्वकार्येशुसर्वदा
हरि ओम गुरुब्यो नमः श्री गुरुब्यो नमः Friends, Namaste on behalf of Team Param Vedanta, I extend one and all a hearty welcome.
Thank you very much, Shubh Kumar. सदा शिवसमारंभम शंकराचार्य मध्यमम अस्मदाचार्य परियंतम वन्दे गुरुपरम्परम् ओम
Friends, Namaste on behalf of Param Vedanta, I extend one and all a hearty welcome for today's special celebratory session on Guru Pournima. We have heard many times that Guru is dispeller or remover of darkness, darkness of ignorance. They impart knowledge, even the ultimate spiritual knowledge, to help us, guide us to connect to that enveloper, to attain Moksha. That too freely, without expecting any material return. It is tradition for students to offer Guru Dakshina. But the highest gratitude one can offer to a Guru is passing on the knowledge and wisdom to others. On this day, Sukhla Paksha Ashada Masa Pavnami, Sej Vedav Yasa was born. And on this day, this day is commonly known as Vyasa Pournima. On this significant day, we offer obeisance to all our enlightened spiritual rishis, gurus and teachers. On this Guru Pournima, Team Param Vedanta, as a prayerful offering to all our gurus, presents a program, beginning with an invocation, prayer to bless and protect this August gathering from the threefold sources of problems. Shrimati Shambala Shetty will sing the Bhajan, “श्री गुरुवे अरुवे”, to invoke Almighty's grace. Shambalaji, please.
शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे आपाद पद्म यदि गवच्छिहिड़िदु नडु नेत्ति गोत्तिकोम्बे आपाद पद्म यदि गवच्छिहिड़िदु नडु नेत्ति गोत्तिकोम्बे उसिरिंदल अदने बलगोम्बे नन्ना कणगोम्बे गोत्तिकोम्बे उसिरिंदल अदने बलगोम्बे नन्ना कणगोम्बे गोत्तिकोम्बे श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे कण्णिंद निन्न नन्नन्न सेरी यदि योलन बेलकनेत्ति कण्णिंद निन्न नन्नन्न सेरी यदि योलन बेलकनेत्ति तिरुमूर्ति माडु नन्नन्नु निन्न चिन्मोद बोध बित्ति तिरुमूर्ति माडु नन्नन्नु निन्न चिन्मोद बोध बित्ति श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे कण्णिंद निन्न नन्नन्न सेरी यदि योलन बेलकनेत्ति कण्णिंद निन्न नन्नन्न सेरी यदि योलन बेलकनेत्ति तिरुमूर्ति माडु नन्नन्नु निन्न चिन्मोद बोध बित्ति तिरुमूर्ति माडु नन्नन्नु निन्न चिन्मोद बोध बित्ति श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे भव भव के नन्न मुंदेत्ति वोत्ति तंदंथ तंद नीनु भव भव के नन्न मुंदेत्ति वोत्ति तंदंथ तंद नीनु भावल्के इलिदु सद्भाव बरिसि बरुवंते माडु नानु भावल्के इलिदु सद्भाव बरिसि बरुवंते माडु नानु श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद हिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे अंतर्य दुंदु चैतन्य निन्न कैंकर्य कर्त्रुवागी अंतर्य दुंदु चैतन्य निन्न कैंकर्य कर्त्रुवागी चेत्रज्ञ बरलि चैतेषणागी मधु बोध मोदमागी चेत्रज्ञ बरलि चैतेषणागी मधु बोध मोदमागी श्री गुरुवे अरुवे शरणागी बरुवे करुणे यनुकोरी बरुवे हृत्त्व प्रकृति तंद बिड़ि हूगलन्नु श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे श्री चरणकेरे युतिरुवे
Thank you Shambalaji for invoking the Divine Grace. Guru Ashtakam, composed by Sri Adi Shankaracharya, in praise of his guru Govindapada, beautifully exemplifies the necessity of a guru while imploring the seeker to bodong at the lotus feet of the guru. He emphasizes that in the absence of a deep devotion to our spiritual teacher, all our attainments are meaningless. I request Shrimati Hindumatiji to render the Guru Ashtakam.
शस्चारो चित्रम धनम मेरु तुल्यम मनस्चेन लग्नम ततोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 कलत्रम धनम पुत्र पौत्रादि सर्वम ग्रहम भांदवासम मवे तद्दिचातम मनस्चेन लग्नम ततोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 शडंगादि वेदो मुखेशास्त्र विद्या कवित्वादि गत्यम सुपद्यम करोति मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 विदेशेशु मान्य स्वदेशेशु धन्य सदाचार वृत्तेशु मत्तोनचान्य मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 क्षमामण्डले भूप भूपाल ब्रुंदे सदासेवितम यस्य पादार विन्दम मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 यशो मेगतम दिक्षु दान प्रतापात जगद्वस्तु सर्वम करेयत प्रसादात मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 नभोगेन योगेन वावाजी राजम नकांता मुखेन ईव वित्तेशु चित्तम मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 अरण्येन वास्वस्य गेहेन कार्य नदेहे मनोवर्तते मेत्वनर्ग्य मनस्चेन लग्नम गुरोरंग्रिपद्मे तथक्किम 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 गुरो रष्टकम यप्पटेत पुण्यदेही यतिर भूपतिर ब्रह्मचारी चगेही लभेद्वान चितार्तम पदम ब्रह्मसंनम गुरोरुत्तवाके नमो यस्य लग्नम गुरोरुत्तवाके मनोयस्य लग्नम गुरोरुत्तवाके मनोयस्य लग्नम ओम
Thank you Hindumatiji for your devotional rendering of Guru Ashtakam. Guru Tattva, Guru is Moksha Dvara, a gateway to the transcendental truth, consciousness. But it is the aspirant that has to enter through it. The Guru helps us understand this. So, Dr. Sachin shall present a talk on Guru Tattva to help us also understand.
Om Guru Bhyo Nama. Happy Guru Pournima to all of you. We are celebrating Guru Pournima because it is Vedavasya Jayanti. In the remembrance of the greatest writer, the greatest saint, Vedavasya, we celebrate this Guru Pournima. Vedavasya, the most important gift to all the mankind is Bhagavad Gita. Not only Bhagavad Gita, but the differentiation of all the Vedas, the four angas, was done by Swamiji Vedavasya. In today's presentation, I would like to talk about the importance of Guru Tattva in one's life. Guru is like a GPS and here GPS stands for Guru Positioning System. He guides us in every turn of our life. Most importantly, he brings us to the right path and that's the path of Dharma. Without the GPS, one would get lost in artha, the needs, and karma, the desires. Without one's guru, Moksha wouldn't be possible. It would be a distant dream for all of us. This GPS should be permanently fitted or applied to our four ashramas and one should abide by it throughout. Guru also helps us to understand the highest knowledge, the understanding of one's real self. He takes us from the seemingly real to the real self. असत्तोमा सत्कमय तमसोमा ज्योतिरकमय प्रत्यवर्मा अमृतम कमय He handholds us through the initial part of our journey and once we are mature enough to walk this spiritual path, he sets us free. He leads with example. He never forces anything. He leads from the front. He doesn't just preach. He guides through his experiences about Brahman. This experiential knowledge is what we all seek and he transfers it through the help of scriptures with a systematic and gradual way. Guru clears any doubts that props up or might prop up through the teachings of Shastra. Also, he makes us understand that the insufficiency of understanding was within us and not in the Shastras. He keeps this Guru Sisya Parampara alive for eternity. Through transforming us and making us live such a life, attuned to Dharma and also to set examples for others. One such Parampara is the Shankara Parampara which is still alive and helping the humankind. If we consider our life as a journey, journey like that a river takes, then Guru represents the place where river takes a significant turn. This turn, this place are sacred ones as they represent the change in river's direction. River here represents our many lives, the so many janmas and the karma phala associated with it. This bend represents the Jivan Mukti, the understanding of Aham Brahma Asmi. I am that and the further journey to finally merge into the ocean represents the journey of a nyanee who knows that he is here to serve and only to serve, without any likes or dislikes, just like the river gives equally to all the people along the bank. It sustains the Sristi. The nyanee also always gives. He is more of a giver than consumer. He never complains and he is always cheerful in the path to merge into the ocean. Guru Tattva is one such important turn in life who changes our path, brings us the right one, the one which is oriented to Dharma. From then, we need to just play a role as a father, a sibling, a professional, till our journey as Jivatma merges into the ocean, Rupi Paramatma. All of us know about Guru, but experiencing the Guru Tattva is a blessing in itself. I would like to explain this experience with my fellow seekers. I was totally ignorant about many things in my spiritual life. But with my Guru's teachings, I am sure about what my path is lying ahead. My Guru's voice for me on every wrong turn is a warning and a prayer for every right turn, every achievement I have. Without my Guru's grace, I won't be here. These scriptures would have not made any impact on my jada bhuti. He was the craftsman who made this clay into a pot. The pot now understands clearly its existence is singular and not binary. He made me to realize that I am the creator, not the creature. As in my dreams, I create is same in my awake world too. He gave me the belief and power by imparting the knowledge of Jivatma and Paramatma are none other than same. It's our Guru which binds us and takes us away from our higher self. It's our guna which binds us and takes us away from higher self. He has worked relentlessly and still shaping me out of the hard rock that I was, I used to be. With my Guru's blessings, I am in Satsanga because I firmly believe that I don't want to miss the bus of Moksha. I don't want to have punarjanma. The only way I can do is put self efforts in understanding scriptures through continuous and systematic study under the able guidance of my Guru. And I am so fortunate that I have not just one but two gurus, two distinct ones. One who I listen, that is Swami Paramarthananda ji and one who I follow, try to follow, is Dr. Hegre. My Sakshat Shata Shata Koti Pranam to both of them on this auspicious day of Guru Pournima. Hare Om.
Sharing your thoughts on Guru Tattva. Dr. Diksha Nayak will sing the Bhajan, “आओ गुरुदेव” दर्शन दीजो. A devotional Bhajan pleading our Guru who is God himself, manifesting in a personal form to guide us aspirants. Guru is the link between the individual and the immortal. He bends down, raising the struggling individual with one hand and with the other lifts them up into that everlasting joy and infinite everlasting truth, consciousness. Dr. Diksha Nayak, please.
आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो तुम हो जगत के दाता आ, तुम हो जगत के दाता आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो तुम हो जगत के दाता आ, तुम हो जगत के दाता तुम ही हो ब्रह्म तुम ही हो वेष्णु तुम हो शंकर रूप तुम ही हो ब्रह्म तुम ही हो वेष्णु तुम हो शंकर रूप सृष्टि स्थितिलय स्वरूप तुम हो तुम हो अनादि रूप सृष्टि स्थितिलय स्वरूप तुम हो तुम हो अनादि रूप तुम हो अनादि रूप तुम हो अनादि रूप आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो तुम हो जगत के दाता आ, तुम हो जगत के दाता अनाथ नाथ दीन बंधु तुम हो आनंद रूप अनाथ नाथ दीन बंधु तुम हो आनंद रूप अज्ञान नाशक शरण सम्रक्षक आत्मज्ञान प्रदाता अज्ञान नाशक शरण सम्रक्षक आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो तुम हो जगत के दाता तुम हो जगत के दाता आओ गुरुदेव दर्शन दीजो तुम हो जगत के दाता
Thank you, Dr. Diksha, for your melodious singing of the Bhajan, elevating the divine spirits in everybody. Sri Vikram shall sing Bhajan Shankara Guru in reverence and obeisance to Bhagavatpada Shankara and Pooja Swami Paramarthananda for their blessings on all as seekers. Sri Vikram, please.
शंकर गुरु जय शंकर गुरु 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 अपार करुणा गुरु नाथ कृपा सागरा गुरु नाथ अपार करुणा गुरु नाथ कृपा सागरा गुरु नाथ गुरु नाथ जय गुरु नाथ गुरुदेव गुरु नाथ गुरु नाथ सद्गुरुदेव अपार ज्ञान परमार्थ आनंद रूप गुरुदेव अपार ज्ञान परमार्थ आनंद रूप गुरुदेव परमात्मा जय परमार्थ आनंद सागर गुरुदेव परमात्मा जय परमार्थ आनंद सागर गुरुदेव गुरु नाथ गुरुदेव शंकर स्वरूप परमार्थ आनंद रूप गुरुदेव परमार्थ जय परमार्थ आनंद सागर गुरुदेव गुरु नाथ गुरुदेव गुरुदेव सद्गुरु नाथ गुरु नाथ सद्गुरुदेव शंकर गुरु जय शंकर गुरु 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 शंकर गुरु जय शंकर गुरु
Thank you Vikramji for rendering this prayerful obeisance to Bhagavatpada Adi Shankara and Pooja Swami Paramarthananda ji. Dr. Timma Pahagde sir will enlighten us all about Guru Pournima, its significance and especially on this day where the power of the Guru is supposed to be on the highest. Thank you.
Om Shri Guru Bhyo Nama. Some time ago, I was speaking to a patient and in the course of the conversation, it was very clear he had a profound spiritual understanding. My first question was, “Who is your Guru?” This is the magic that Guru brings in our lives. We do not know how it happens, but without our knowledge, there is an internal transformation. And I can't think of anything else more magical in the course of a spiritual journey than to come under the influence of a Guru who the Mundaka Upanishad talks as “श्रोत्रय ब्रह्मनिष्ठा” one who is a manifestation of Brahman himself and who has the ability to communicate his understanding. and who has the ability to communicate his understanding to a level that we are able to understand. This guru-student relationship is a very special relationship. It is a very special love relationship. We all have experienced a certain kind of a love relationship. There is one verse which comes from the Brihadaranyak Upanishad where none other than the great Yajnavalika in the course of her discourse to his wife Maitri says something which is extremely difficult to believe, "आत्मनस्य कामाय सर्वम् प्रियम् भवत" which means, "Everyone loves someone else for his or her own sake." Supposing you love somebody. Why do you love somebody? Because that person's, the presence of that person brings you so much joy. We think that we love that person for that person's sake, but the truth is, we love somebody because he or she brings so much joy in your life. For some reason, if over a period of time, if that love disappears or if that person turns against you, then, she says, "Love also disappears." But this is not so in a master-student relationship. A master-student relationship, a guru-disciple relationship is very special because the student doesn't expect anything and more importantly, the master does not do anything. And yet, something magical happens. There was a great master called Zenirin and they asked him, "What do you do?" He says, "I don't do anything." But they said, "In your presence, so much happens." He said, "Sitting quietly, doing nothing, the spring comes and the grass grows by itself." This is the unique thing that all those who have been blessed to be in the presence of a guru know that this guru-tatva has transformed our understanding to such an extent that we cannot express our thanks. And in this time of Gurupurnima, this is an opportunity for us to express that which is inexpressible, "तत्पदम् दर्शितम् येन् तस्मय् श्री गुरुवे नमः" to that guru who has opened my eyes into that spiritual path. This is also a time for us to express our gratefulness to the entire parampara of guru starting from Sadashiva Sri Dakshina Murthy himself, that prayer that we always say, "सदाशिव समारंभाम् शंकराचार्य मध्यमाम् अस्मदाचार्य पर्यंताम् वंदे गुरु परम्पराम् ओम" On this occasion of Gurupurnima, let us do what, what can we do as a form of gratefulness to our guru? I have a certain proposal and I hope it will be acceptable for you. I will share it in the form of a story, but it is actually a certain commitment that we need to make from now on until Gurupurnima next year. This story is none other than about two little boys. One of them was Vidya Ranyaswamy and his brother, who later on became Bharati Tiirta. His father wanted him to study under a certain guru called Shankarananda. But this Shankarananda was a very difficult as a person, both difficult as a teacher, but a great accomplished guru, who was refusing to accept anybody as a student. But when he saw these two brilliant boys, he accepted them to be his students. Both of them were under his, were his students. And later on, as the story goes, both of them became the Acharyas for none other than the Shringiri Mata. The younger brother became Bharati Tiirta. The older brother succeeded him as Vidya Ranyaswamy. These two brothers have composed a magnum opus called Panchadashi. Panchadashi literally means fifteen. Swami Anubhavananda had said, "Just like if a Christian does not know what Bible is, so too if a Vedanta student does not know what Panchadashi is." That is the importance that Panchadashi he gives for all sincere students of Vedanta. Panchadashi means fifteen, there are fifteen texts. The first five deals with, it is actually Sat-Chit-Ananda. The first five deal with discrimination or Viveka. The next five deal with illumination, consciousness or Deepa. And the last five deal with bliss or Ananda. That is how the entire Panchadashi has been composed. In the beginning of the composition of Panchadashi, there is one nice mantra where the two brothers give their respect to Sri Shankarananda. It goes like this, "नमः श्री शंकरानंद गुरु पदाम्बुज जन्मने" "I offer my Namaskara to the lotus feet of my guru." And what is the guru's only job? "सविलासः महा मोहः ग्राहः ग्रासिकः एकः कर्मनि" "My guru has only one job and that is सविलासः नासः" What is सविलासः? सविलासः means samsara. Samsara is based on ignorance of our true nature and because of ignorance of our true nature, various forms of ramifications happen. Our guru has only one objective and that objective is how to deliver us from samsara. Dear friends, we have been studying the Bhagavad Gita, we have studied the Mundaka Upanishad, we have studied various Prakaranagrantas. Most of us have been very sincere students for at least two years or more than two years. In these two years, one thing is very clear. Spiritual knowledge to a certain extent has come to us and we can be with certainty that we have Jnannam. I have Jnannam, but my life does not seem to have transformed. That means, in this work, in Panchadashi, there is a certain work called Tripti Deepa Prakaranam. And as immediately after Gurupurnima, I would like to introduce this magnum opus among the entire Panchadashi, which is Tripti Deepa. Tripti Deepa is based on one verse of Brihadaranyak Upanishad, 4412. There is one verse in the Brihadaranyak Upanishad which goes like this, "आत्मनम् चेद विजानियात अयम् अस्मीति पूरुषः किम्मिच्छन् कस्य कामाय शरीरम् अनुस्वम् जवरेत" पूरुषः, that means all of us must know the atma, must know our true nature. विजानियात, we should know it very clearly. And once we know what happens, किम्मिच्छन् कस्य कामाय there is nothing to do, there is nowhere to go. Vidya Ranyaswamy and his brother Bharati Tiirta in this book will promise you that we can move from Jnannam to Jnana Nishtha. There is that famous story of those ten boys who cross the river and then, you know the story of the Dashama Naasti. Vidya Ranyaswamy uses this story again and again and tells us about seven stages of spiritual evolution. And if I go by that, all of us are in stage four or between stage four and stage five. Stage four is Brahman knowledge or atma knowledge is very clear. "I know all about Brahman." That means Brahman is parokshatha. About Brahman, I know I can come and give a talk. But that Brahman I am, that has not yet internalized. That means we have to move from paroksha to aparoksha, from stage four to stage five. And the moment we come to stage five, there is nothing else to do, shoka nirriti, all sorrows go, tripti will come. And this is the promise, why we have knowledge, but this knowledge is called सप्रतिबंध ज्ञानम्. That means I have knowledge, but this knowledge is mixed with obstacles. And Vidya Ranyaswamy so beautifully brings us, "Where is the obstacle and how I can overcome all these obstacles?" In addition to us, we have a commitment from Swami Anubhavananda ji, a living guru, who has promised us that he would spend seven days in a retreat form in October, that gives us four months' time. Now, I seek from all of you a sense of commitment that in these four months that we will look into Panchadashi and internalize this understanding so much that when he brings it out to us, we, it will also reinforce our teaching. Around the time of Vijaya Dashami, that is sometime in October, we will go into our next text which I had promised earlier, that is going to be Kathop Upanishad. In Kathop Upanishad, we have a very unique teacher in Yamadarmaraja. Yamadarmaraja is going to be the teacher. Why this text is so important? For one reason, it is an upanishad. The upanishad are the source books of all the, all the Gitas. Of all the upanishads, it is from the Kathop Upanishad Sri Krishna has drawn most number of verses. We have the highest reverence ever for a Brahma Vidya Acharya. Brahma Vidya Acharya is taken as god to us. And here strangely, we will see, normally somebody whom we are afraid of, Yamadarmaraja, now becomes a Brahma Vidya Acharya. That means, if I have that kind of reverence to Yamadarmaraja, it is possible that my fear of death or the death of those close to me is not going to be a problem. In addition, we have the young Nachiketa, who is going to be a role model, a role model of commitment. In the seventh chapter of the Bhagavad Gita, there is a verse, verse number three, "मनुष्यानाम् सहस्रेषु" Among the thousands of people who come to Vedanta, very few people get an opportunity to study. Of them, very few go all the way. All the way means what? From parokshadjnanam to aparokshadjnanam to stage six where all dukkha nirriti to stage seven where there is tripti. This is our hope that we will commit from now and perhaps this is the greatest commitment that we can give to our teachers who have brought us so far and to Swami Paramarthananda ji in particular, I make this prayer, "अखंडमंडलाकारम् व्याप्तम् येन् चराचरम् तत्पदम् दर्शितम् येन् तस्मय् श्री गुरुवे नमः" Haryo.
On behalf of the entire Param Vedanta family, I would like to convey our kotti-kotti pranams to our dear Dr. Timma Pahigde sir. Sir, you not only have extended your hand to lift us all up and lead us into this wondrous spiritual journey, but you have been a model to many or most all of us. Thank you, sir. Shrimati Radharavi brings a treat for all of us from her family. She will sing Guru Vandanumulu. The beauty of this is, it's a unique composition composed by her husband, Sri Ravi. And not only that, the tune to this composition has been rendered by her son. This family effort, we look forward to listen to you. Shrimati Radharavi, please.
Sri Gurubhyo namaha. भस्मी कृत त्रिपुँ ब्रह्मुनु नुदुट दालचि दंडहस्तुनि तिकुनु मंदहास मुत्तो विक्षिंचि जीवात्म परमात्म अैक्य मुनु स्पष्ट परिचि विन्निनु लुकु जाभल्लिने शेखनु दालचि वट्ट प्रोक्ष समीपमुल मौनिय करुणिंचु गुरु मूर्ति की शरणु शरणु पुराणमुलनु स्रुजिंचि ब्रह्मसूत्रमुलनु कूर्चि भागवतमगरंदमुनु जनुलकु अंदिंचि करुणिंचु गुरु मूर्ति की शरणु शरणु सर्व अद्वैत तत्वमुनकु आलवालमई चतुर्पीठ स्तंपकुड़े विविधस्तोत्र श्रुष्टिकर्तय संसार झलदिलो मोह मकरमुलनु तोलकिंचु प्रवत्तय सन्यास संमोह स्वरूपुड़े करुणिंचु गुरु मूर्ति की शरणु शरणु आत्मानात्म विवेतमुलनु तेटपरिचि शवधमाधिषट संपत्तिनि पूतभोसि कामपूरितमईन मदमुनकु दारिचूपि परमार्कतत्वमुनु भोधपरिचे चिरुनूतो यान त्रिश्नतीर्जि करुणिंचु गुरु मूर्तुलकु शरणु शरणु शरण Thank you, sir.
Radha ji, thank you and also a big thanks to your family from all of us at Param Vedanta. It was wonderful listening to you and more so for me since it's a composition in Telugu.
Gurubhyo namaha. परमकृपा नींदे इन्दंदि गुणिन्य निजपाद कमालनंबिस्तुति सुवे मोदकर संपूजित
Friends, before we come to the next program, doctor has already explained to us, introduced what our next session will be. With both Bhagavad Gita verse by verse and Disha series and Disha series having concluded, we shall continue to have satsangs on Zoom every Thursday where we shall study select verse from the seventh chapter of Panchadashi, that is Triptideepa Panchaka of Swami Vidya Ranyaswami. During these sessions, we shall also have question and answer session, discussions on the topic of the presentation. Those who are unable to join us on these Zoom meetings need not fret for on Saturdays, the same verses shall be recorded and premiered on YouTube. Details of both Tuesday satsang and YouTube premiere shall be communicated in our groups. Most importantly, thank you friends for joining all of us and taking off your time to be part of these auspicious celebrations. No program and more so a spiritual one as this is complete unless we thank that Almighty for his blessings, our bright young Kumari Naraini will sing Mangalam Guru Sri, the Aarti song to our Jagatguru as a tribute, tribute to all our gurus and to bring this program to its conclusion.
Hari Om Sri Gurubhyo namaha. Mangalam Guru Sri, Shaktiganapatisharadhambege Shankaracharya dige Veeradhira shurhanuma Maruti charanake Ambabhavani kambadaganapatichandichamuge Vidyaranyarige Vidya Shankaragee Vagishvarige Vajdevagaru Damjanayarige Shingeri puradulu nilasiruvanthama Maruti charanake Sachchidananda Shiva Abhinavanarasimha Bharatige Chandrasekhar Bharati Guru Sarva Bhavumarege Chandrasekhar Bharati Guru Sarva Bhavumarege Chandrasekhar Bharati Guru Bharati Teertarege Chandrasekhar Bharati Guru Vidushekhar Bharatige Mangalam Guru Sri, Chandramolishvaragee Shaktiganapatisharadhambege Shankaracharya dige Shaktiganapatisharadhambege Shankaracharya dige Hari Om Sri Gurubhyo namaha.
Danyavada and Shubhratri. Om Purnamadha Purnamidham Purnat Purnamudachate Purnasya Purnamadaya Purnamevavashyate Om Shanti 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 Hari Om Sri Gurubhyo namaha Hari Om Sri Krishna.